If you would like, please feel free to join us. Ms. Isby, could I get you the word of prayer tonight?
Yes. If you'll bow with me, our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the abundant blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for this city that you have blessed us with, and we just ask, Lord, that you give us wisdom, guidance, and all of the decisions that we make, and we just pray that at the end you will get the glory that you're so deserving of. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, state of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes? Mr. Spurgers is out. Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawks?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the minutes from February 11, 2025 meeting. Any corrections, comments, or changes?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Pass is five to zero. The stomach bug has got Mr. Jones. The procedure on the eye has got Mr. Grimes, and Mr. Spurgers is out of state. Well, tonight, we have some very special guests. We have the state champion Conway High School Wampus Cats volleyball team. Come on up.
I was gonna say, where's our conscience?
What we'll do, the family that's here, we'll read this proclamation and present it, and then, ladies, if y'all stand up here, and family, if you'd come up, we'll have the council come up, and we'll take another big picture.
So who'd we beat in the finals, ladies? All right. Northwest Arkansas, take that. I'm gonna give y'all a day out of school for that. This is a proclamation to the Lady Wampus Cat Volleyball Team, whereas the Conway High School Lady Wampus Cat Volleyball Team demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication, and sportsmanship throughout the 2024 season, and whereas their hard work, perseverance culminated in a victory against Bentonville High School on November 2, 2024, securing the Class 6A state championship, and whereas this remarkable achievement has brought pride and honor to our city, showcasing the talent and commitment of our student athletes and coaching staff, and whereas the team's success serves as an inspiration to the youth of Conway, exemplifying the values of teamwork, determination, and excellence, and whereas the support of family, friends, and the entire community has been instrumental in the team's accomplishments, and whereas the city of Conway and the local community are proud to honor their achievement, now therefore, I, Bart Casperi, may of the city of Conway, congratulate and hereby acknowledge all the achievements of the 2024 state champion Conway High School Lady Wampus Cats volleyball team. Ladies, congratulations.
You can't get behind a man.
Are we getting behind our children?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Next up, we're gonna have an update from Dr. Terry Fiddler on the dental clinic for this year. Dr. Fiddler?
And you wanted me to follow that.
Yeah, I did that on purpose.
Hey, real quick, March, I'm sorry, April 11th and 12th, at the Conway Expo Center, we'll have our 18th Annual Mission of Mercy. Through the end of last year, we've seen 27,200 patients and delivered $17.9 million worth of free dentistry. We plan on, we'll have probably between 2,000 and 2,500 people will be here for the weekend that I just mentioned. Today, I spent, did my first draw to buy services and products here in the city of Conway, and I distributed $49,000 today. So that's our first draw. We'll end up spending about, we spent last year here $257,000 for our projects here. And so we will probably see somewhere around 1,400 to 1,800 patients in that amount of time. Last year, we had six states that attended here. We even had a lady that came from Wisconsin on a bus, and for $139, she got $5,000 worth of free dentistry. And so it was worth her trip. So it is a great project. We have dentists, physicians, dental assistants, hygienists. We had about 680 lay volunteers from Conway around the city. Several of the council members came and worked the project, and it was, it's really quite something. But like I said, this is our 18th year. Had a contact, well, I cannot say who it was until it comes out in public, but a very large family foundation in the United States contacted me and interviewed me and asked me today why, or I'm sorry, this is, yeah, yesterday, Monday, asked me why we always did it in Conway, and I said, we did not always. They said, well, what was the reason for being Conway? And I said, because of the people. I said, we have a great city council and mayor. Honestly, I said that, I'm not blowing smoke. And I said, and we have a chamber that works with us, the city and county governments work with us, and we have so many of the churches that work with us. And so looking forward to the event. So we'll start, we'll be coming out, and I will imagine it will be on the national, it will come to y'all through the city government on the family foundation out of state that we'll be telling about, and it'll be a couple paragraphs about the city of Conway. So thank y'all very much.
Dr. Fiddler, thank you to you and your group.
It's April 11 and 12. That's a Friday and Saturday.
Hey, Dr. Fiddler?
We started seeing patients last year for the first time, and it worked very well.
We saw our first patients at 2:00 in the morning. And so that's what, and when I got in line to walk the line last year at 5:30, we had 730 people standing outside waiting to get in. So it's a very good thing.
It's easy to say thank you for spending money in Conway, but it's not about that, Dr. Fiddler. Thank you to you and your group for reaching out and helping people. Thank you.
Well, it's God's work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
First up on the agenda, we have the monthly financial report ending January 20, I'm sorry, January 31, 2025. Mr. Winningham?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Don't have just a whole lot to go over this month. We are under a spending freeze. We've got some other factors at play as well. Spending freeze, if you look through the street sanitation and airport, you'll see the other operating and the capital expenses are very low or zero. That's where the spending freeze shows up. What's kind of counteracting that is we have several annual dues that we have to pay in January, a lot of maintenance on our software that we use is due at the first of the year, so we still have to pay those. Another thing, we have three pay periods in January. Now, one of those pay periods was actually for the end of last year, so the expense doesn't show up here, but where you will see that have the most effect is on our cash balances. So our cash kind of took a hit in January, but all that is budgeted and to be expected. Our sales tax revenue, we hit on this last meeting, it was down compared to last year, but we are, we did hit our budget number for it, so there's nothing to be concerned or alarmed about there. So 2025 is off and going.
Any questions for Mr. Winningham?
Freeze will last, will last how long?
It will end, it will end at the end of March, unless our, for some reason, our sales tax numbers do not come up to our budget numbers, and if they do not, then I will extend it.
Thank you.
Motion for approval of the monthly financials as of January 31st?
I have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials ending January 31, 2025. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the Community Development Committee, Mr. Hawkins. I will turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this agenda is consideration to approve waiving all the readings, all three readings for the ordinances on tonight's agenda, and I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the waiving of three readings tonight. Any further discussion? Council, according to Mr. Fink and Minor, I will need to vote on this. So, Ms. Hurd?
Aye.
Pass is six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolu-
trip. So it is a great project. We have dentists, physicians, dental assistants, hygienists. We had about 680 lay volunteers from Conway around the city. Several of the council members came and worked the project, and it was, it's really quite, quite something. But like I said, this is our 18th year. Had a contact, well, I cannot say who it was until it comes out in public, but a very large family foundation in the United States contacted me and interviewed me and asked me today why, or I'm sorry, this is, yeah, yesterday, Monday, asked me why we always did it in Conway. And I said, we did not always. And they said, well, what was the, the reason for being Conway? And I said, because of the people. I said, we have a great city council and mayor. Honestly, I said that. I'm not blowing smoke. And, and I said, and we have a chamber that works with us, the city and county governments work with us, and we have so many of the churches that work with us. And so looking forward to the, the event. So we'll start, we'll be coming out, and I will imagine it will be on the national, it will come to y'all through the city government on the Family Foundation out of state that we'll be telling about. And it'll be a couple paragraphs about the City of Conway. So thank y'all very much.
Dr. Fiddler, thank you to you and your group.
April 11th and 12th?
Hey, Dr. Fiddler.
We started seeing patients last year for the first time, and it worked very well.
We saw our first patients at 2:00 in the morning. And so that's what, and when I got in line to walk the line, last year at 5:30, we had 730 people standing outside waiting to get in. So it's a very good thing.
It's easy to say thank you for spending money in Conway, but it's not about that, Dr. Fiddler. Thank you to you and your group for, for reaching out and helping people.
Yeah, well, it's God's work.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. First up on the agenda, we have the monthly financial report ending January 20, I'm sorry, January 31st, 2025. Mr. Winningham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Don't have just a whole lot to go over this month. We are under a spending freeze. But we've got some other factors at play as well. Spending freeze, if you look through the street sanitation and airport, you'll see the other operating and the capital expenses are very low or zero. That's where the spending freeze shows up. What's kind of counteracting that is we have several annual dues that we have to pay in January, a lot of maintenance on our software that we use is due at the first of the year, so we still have to pay those. Another thing, we have three pay periods in January. Now, one of those pay periods was actually for the end of last year, so the expense doesn't show up here, but where you will see that have the most effect is on our cash balances. So our cash kind of took a hit in January, but all that is, is budgeted and to be expected. Our sales tax revenue, we hit on this last meeting, it was down compared to last year, but we are, we did hit our budget number for it. So there's no, nothing to be concerned or alarmed about there. So 2025 is off and going.
Any questions for Mr. Winningham?
Freeze will last, will last how long?
It will end, it will end at the end of March, unless our, for some reason, our sales tax numbers do not come up to our budget numbers, and if they do not, then, then I will extend it.
Thank you.
Motion for approval of the monthly financials as of January the 31st.
Have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials ending January 31st, 2025. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Aye.
Next up, we have the Community Development Committee, Mr. Hawkins. I will turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this agenda is consideration to approve waiving all the readings, all three readings for the ordinances on tonight's agenda, and I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the waiving of three readings tonight. Any further discussion? And Council, according to Mr. Finkenmeyer, I will need to vote on this. So, Ms. Hurd.
Aye.
Passes 6 to 0. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution to approve the city applying for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant through Metro Plan for the conversion of streetlights in partnership with Conway Corporation. I know we're gonna learn something right here.
We'll hope so. Okay, so yes, thank you for your time. We are, Conway Corp approached us, and there's a funding opportunity through Metro Plan for converting streetlights to LED. And so we partnered with the M and Dale and Lindsay are here from Conway Corp. If you guys have any technical questions regarding this application, but we are expressing, we are wanting to apply for this funding opportunity, and it does not require any matching funds, and hopefully we can replace some streetlights with some current technologies.
How much we can apply for?
Well, the whole funding pot is about $5 million, and I think application we are developing is around two, two and a half, two and a half. We'll see what they say about that, though.
If we get it, we'll be good and light in Conway, won't we?
That's right. But if awarded, Conway Corp will implement and manage this, this project.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion. R 2504.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for grant application for Metro Plan, Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Passes 5 to 0. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution to approve a corporate ground lease for BB Rider LLC for the Conway Airport. And Jake, good evening, sir.
Good. How are y'all doing? Good. Good. It's my last one. So it's the last hangar spot available. We're sold out. So I'm gonna take all my signs down, all my realtor signs down off the lots, and I'm closing shop if you guys think it's okay.
You're out of the real estate.
I think so.
That's, that's good news.
That is.
That is.
This'll bring, he's there now, this company, like a hangar of their own. They've got a jet, so it'll, you know, bring another jet to the field as well. So, so we do this lease, and I know I've said this before, but it's a 30 cents square foot a year ground lease. They build a hangar, they pay for the hangar, they pay us net fee for the entire plat that they use, so the parking lot and the hangar. That's once a year, and then after 40 years, that hangar then belongs to the city. The city can lease it out. So.
Thank you, Jake. Questions?
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, but the resolution has R 22, and that should be R 2505.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for a ground lease for the Conway Airport. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Jacob. You're doing a good job out there. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution to request a lien for property located at 413 Garland Street for the Public Works Department. The City of Conway has paid out $399.19 to bring this particular piece of property into compliance, and we have a resolution to read for this item. It's Resolution R 2506.
Before we start, Mr. Hawkins, we've had several folks who watch on TV, wants to know exactly what this procedure is. I'm gonna ask Mr. Finkenmeyer to explain what the city's doing here.
All right. So everyone that woke up this morning wondering if this was the day you're going to hear about cleanup liens in Arkansas, strap yourselves in.
That'll be good.
Under Arkansas law, any city is authorized to order an owner of real property to remove garbage, garbage, rubbish, other unsightly items from their property. And a cleanup lien is a lien securing the cost of the work done by a city to remove, abate, or eliminate a condition that violates a city ordinance. So that's what a cleanup lien is. If an owner refuses to remove, abate, or eliminate a nuisance or a condition that violates a city ordinance within, after being given seven days notice, written notice, the city by law can do whatever is necessary to correct the condition and to charge the cost of that correction to the owner of the property. So that's, that's the law that applies to cleanup liens in Arkansas. The city gets a lien for the cost. Notices shall be regular mail and certified mail return receipt requested. After the work has been completed, the city shall provide a second notice to the owner of the total amount of the cleanup lien sought, and this includes administrative and filing costs. And the amount, the decision to create the cleanup lien, because it's an option that the city council has to, to even create the lien, and the amount, that's what is before the council tonight, is are we gonna create this lien, and if so, what's the amount? And there's, I believe there's an amount, as Mr. Hawkins just read, that's being proposed by the city to the council, 399 and something. So the, the two things for the city to decide tonight, the city council, is whether to create that lien for the cost of the cleanup and what amount. And then any decision that's made regarding the cleanup lien can be appealed by the property owner to Circuit Court, so.
Oh, a question, and let's go back to the legality, if we could, for a moment. You said seven-day written notice, is that correct?
Correct. So in Arkansas, any city that has an ordinance like Conway does, that regulates property, and I'll let Mr. Clausen go into this a little bit more, but that regulates nuisances on property, like Conway does, that's step one. If the city has such an ordinance, which Conway does, then it can order a property owner to abate that nuisance to correct that condition that's out of compliance with the ordinance. They have to do, but they have to do it by providing seven days written notice. And so that, what that tells this property owner is that you have seven days from this notice to correct the condition, or we may have to correct it. And if we have to correct it, then the city corrects it, then the city can, can bill the cost of that correction to the owner of the property.
And is that, is that the trigger for what happens after that?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. That's the notice of violation.
That's all I need to know.
For those that have asked that question, I would like you to clarify one thing, because we get a number of calls on this. This does not include condensate lines from your property that might leak over on your neighbors. Is that correct?
I could answer that question if I knew what a condensate line is.
That's when your heating unit or your air conditioner, because the new heating unit's condensate, but the, the little line that comes outside your house there, from wherever your heating unit or cooling unit is in the house or the attic, and it drains the moisture out, water out. Folks actually want us to make their neighbors abate that, and historically we have not, because water seeks its own level.
Well, now I know what a condensate line is, and I'm, I'm not happy to know what a condensate line is, but knowing that, I don't believe that water runoff from a condensate line would fall within the nuisance abatement ordinance of the City of Conway.
Okay. We get more calls on that probably, on those small.
I have never called to complain about that.
We have. Thank you. All right. Mr. Clausen, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins.
No, that's okay.
Me? All right. Yes, we're here to request a lien for work performed by the city to abate a nuisance located at 413 Garland Street in efforts to maintain public safety.
Mr. Clausen, I'm gonna ask you the same question I just asked Council.
Sure.
Was a seven-day written notice given to the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property?
Yes, sir. We, we provided a lot of notice, a lot more than seven days, and provided in many different ways, emails, text message, phone calls, certified mail, and regular mail, and yes, sir.
And all, all of those, so they were sent, all of those were sent in those different manners, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have a copy of the receipt of the...
Certified.
Certified.
I do, yes, sir. I've got two, two receipts here, or certified mail that was sent to the property. Actually, there's, it looks like, make sure I'm not doubling up. I, I've got three-year receipts for certified mail that was sent. Make sure those dates are, yeah, 116, 213, both sent to the property owner.
116 and 213. When was the work done?
Work was done on January the 19th. So in order to abate the nuisance, we have to provide a notice of violation. The property owner received that notice of violation. And he was notified into writing by email. Like I said, on, on this case, there was, there's quite a bit of notice provided. This case was actually opened in June. He was given eight months to clean up this, the mess. We had over seven rechecks, two officers worked the case, there were 99 text messages, two and a half hours of phone calls, three letters mailed, certified mail, and, and two emails. So there's quite a bit of, of notice for this particular case.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Clausen. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone on the property like to speak? Yes, sir, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Name is AJ Register. I'm representing Delta REI LLC, which is the owner of the property. I would first like to address, Mr. Hawkins, your question. I believe Mr. Clausen is incorrect. The cleanup was actually performed on January 9th. So to your question concerning dates, I think that is problematic, but I'll get to that in a moment.
Just a minute, Mr. Clausen, let, let Mr. Registry speak.
I, oh, I'm already up here. I do have some slides here prepared. Kind of walk through the, walk through some issues here that I would like to make Council aware of. Is this a court hearing? I mean, are we objecting to?
Does this, does this relate to the issue before the council, which is just to create? This is not a hearing over the notice of violation or the existence of a violation, but rather whether the council should create a lien for the cost of the cleanup.
Sure.
And you would have the right to appeal this to Circuit Court if you're not happy with the decision. But yeah, this is not a court, so I'm, I'm not sure what the point would be in presenting this, whatever, and then I don't know what you're gonna present. I did send a request or a suggestion that you might share the information with the other side before.
Yeah, so any audio that would be presented was discussion with a code enforcement officer who I, I see the rest of code enforcement here, but he's oddly absent here tonight. So I, you know, the city has, has the ability on any city device to, to have audio recording as well as I do. So I mean, if, if there was a question as to authenticity, I think code enforcement officer could certainly have been here to, to verify that.
I, I don't think that that's the objection. I think that what's being pointed out is that you're requesting that the council allow you, which they don't have to, allow you to play recordings, show photographs, and you've not provided that to the city before.
All, all the information I'm providing was submitted or given to me via FOIA requests that the city had access to, obviously since they provided it, so.
And for the council's benefit, because they're gonna determine how much time they're gonna, I mean, how, how long this is gonna take.
I, I can be very brief here, fairly brief.
Because they decide how much time this, this, they wanna...
We, we do make this opportunity available every time this happens.
Correct.
This is the, probably the first time that I can remember having someone come up and, and wanna speak to an issue. I'd say a couple of minutes. Would that be fine, Mr. Register?
Uh, I would ask for up to 10 minutes.
They don't even ask for discussions.
How about, how about we meet you halfway at 5:00?
I'll do my best to run through it.
Thank you. So the floor is yours, Mr. Registry.
Thank you. So to give a little context, this, this property was purchased by the current entity, the current owner, I believe it was November of 2022. There's a record of a violation from earlier in 2022 for a nuisance structure, and this would have been prior to purchase.
I would like you to address the time period in question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So.
It was back to last June.
Right. So the issue here was that the structure was torn down. It sat in its current state for 17 months. And the reason for presenting, this is obviously what it looked like at the time it was purchased most recently. The reason I am pointing this out was because the initial nuisance that was cited was marked as resolved, and then immediately after purchase was then, or two months after purchase was again cited for the exact same code here, 4.2.2, along with some other things. So I contacted the officer, Officer Gann at that time, notified him that the structure was scheduled to be torn down, and that all of his, all of his concerns, I thought, would be addressed at that point. He said that was fine. Structure was torn down. This is January 24th of '23, as you can see. This is from code enforcement. This is exactly what this, the, the main charge here for the cleanup was for the concrete, which is exactly as it sits here. This is how it sat for 17 months. And I will also point out, when this was cited previously in 2022, and then demolished, the officer at that time marked it as resolved in 2023 with the concrete as it sat.
I did not see anything that referenced the concrete. I saw tall grass. I saw something else.
Correct. So there was a house on the property at the time. This is what it looked like when this, these nuisance were cited, or violations were noted, I would say. So, but after it was demolished, the concrete was left in the driveway. That was done, I should mention, because during the time up to the point of demolition, we had problems with people driving onto the lot, dumping trash, that type of thing. So I did request that some concrete be left in the driveway to prevent that.
Do we have a date on that picture right there that you just showed?
That was provided by code enforcement. I believe it was 12, 12, it was December of '24.
December of '24, okay.
So that is how it sat for 17 months, up until June, or I'm sorry, July 1st, I believe. The most recent, so here we are after it sat for 17 months. This is the, the most recent notice, which I obtained again from code enforcement, from a FOIA request. You'll see the date there and the things that were cited. I had a discussion, this was not mailed to me. I had a discussion with Officer Gann, who called me, told him I would be happy to address the issues. I did mention the matter of the concrete and explained why it was there. This is an email from Officer Gann. So we went back and forth. One thing that I would point out that was an issue that was recurring was the goalposts continually moved here. So I would, I would speak to Officer Gann. He would indicate that everything looked good, and then he would call me back and say, well, there seems to be something else. So, but this email is from him on August 30th to these other individuals here with code enforcement.
Those seem to indicate the concrete is still on the property.
That is correct. So that was August 30th. As you will see here, this is a transcript from a phone call with Officer Gann. Mr. Clausen referred to multiple phone calls. So during one of those phone calls, I did speak to Officer Gann concerning this. He mentioned, after I mentioned that why the concrete was there, he mentioned that he would speak with Mr. Clausen. So I think as you can see, I mean, it was pretty obvious that Mr. Clausen was aware and approved that the concrete could stay there, and I do have a recording from that phone call. So this is...
Do we have, do we have anything that shows after that date that we asked for the concrete to... Would that be? Would that be?
Other notice? Okay. Boom. What was that?
So...
If we've asked for the concrete to be moved, even though we have this right here, our city people are asking for that to be done.
Something that Mr. Clausen is not aware of was there were existing issues with code enforcement. At a time in August, I considered a lot of their communications to become... Brassing. Mr. Clausen, there are legal ways to contact the owners of property. All those methods were available to them. I did eliminate a few of those channels, which I believe Mr. Clausen was unaware of. Email is not valid service. Text messages are not valid service. There's reasons for that. So, I will leave that at that. I do have this phone call recorded.
Well, I'm not interested in listening to a phone call.
Well, it's...
Without city attorney approval on that.
Thank you, Mr. Registry. Is there anything else? I'll give you one more minute. Is there anything else?
Yeah, so there's... Here's another, here's an email from Mr. Gann to the rest of code enforcement. Good with leaving the concrete in place. Just verifies what he told me on the phone call.
Would you back that up, please?
Yeah.
Okay, he was good with leaving the concrete in place?
You were good with leaving it in place?
Correct, when he spoke with me on the phone.
That's saying you were good with it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, he had approval to leave the concrete in place and let me know. And he was saying he was, "I was good with leaving the concrete in place."
Would you go to your next one that you... Concrete is still clean, other than the concrete?
Correct. Officer Davis, so they changed officers at some point who was, who were on the case. This is from your agenda. You can see where actually seemed Officer Davis was aware that the concrete could stay because he actually closed the case on December 10th. It went from in violation to corrected, failed to pass, in violation corrected. That email was, that last email was sent December 10th at 1:00 PM. So, an hour and 40 minutes later, he sends another email, says, "Went with Spencer to look at property. Brush pile has been burned, did not have a burn permit. For some reason, he felt he wanted to include that. Concrete's still there." And apparently, in the hour and 40 minutes, the grass needed to be cut. So, at that point, he then opened the case again after he returned with Mr. Clausen. This is a copy of my burn permit that was obtained on 12/6. These are the valid laws here. Include this from Mr. Finkenbinder here. I know, I did appreciate his mentioning that. So, again, each notice has to be sent regular mail and certified mail return receipt requested. I would request that if that's taken into consideration, those return receipts requested, and that would also be the initial notice of violation.
Mr. Registry, I appreciate you coming up.
So, I do have an email here from Charles Gann. Notices never mailed, only contact was on the phone and texting. So, obviously demonstrating that notices were not provided. This is the FOIA request for all of the notices and the city responding and saying that none of the notices were provided other than the one provided after the facts.
Thank you. I'm going to stop you there, Mr. Registry. Thank you for stepping in.
This is a picture of the grass that was too tall. This was January 9th. This was provided by code enforcement. The notice says has to be over eight inches, I believe. So, I will. I just want to make sure that counsel is fully aware of these issues, so.
Mr. Clausen, do you have...
Yes, sir. There's just a few things I'd like to say. One is this came in on a citizen complaint. The 17 months between whenever the house was torn down and the demo permit was issued and all that, this complaint came in from a citizen. The complaint addresses, it addresses the concrete foundation blocks. They're stacked up there. This was done after all prior notice was given to abate the nuisance. The issue of abating the nuisance is you have to provide a notice of violation. Okay? He was given a notice of violation in order to do that. So, the nuisance was abated. We also did this with public safety in mind, with the pending snowstorm, and thought it was wise to get the blocks removed to avoid anybody being injured.
Mr. Clausen, what were the dates of the return receipts that you have?
We have a return receipt of... And again, to abate a nuisance, I don't have to send a certified letter.
Mr. Clausen, what was the date of the cleanup?
The date of the cleanup, according to this paperwork, it is, was January 9th. I believe I misspoke. If I did say the 19th, then I don't remember if that's what I said, but if that's what came out, then that's incorrect.
So, basically, the two return receipt notices were letting him know that it had been cleaned up.
It had been cleaned up and notifying him of the lien here.
Of the lien.
Yes, ma'am. So, and again, as far as a question of notice goes, there were eight months, seven rechecks, two officers worked the case. We had 99 text messages back and forth, phone calls that lasted a total of 2:31. He was mailed three letters and two additional certified letters plus two emails. An important thing to keep in mind is there's a legal term of actual notice. So, in real estate deals, civil cases, things of that nature, when you make this much contact, it's deemed as actual notice. We weren't hiding the football. We weren't trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes or do a bill. Another thing to keep in mind is the weight of this concrete was 7,000 pounds. Most of this bill just accounts for the weight of it for the dump tickets. So, and the labor that went into getting it done. We don't pad it, we don't double it, we're not trying to make a profit. It's just to recoup the city's money that we put out for this.
And again, code enforcement's actions are based on calls that you get from residents.
Yes, ma'am. We do proactive enforcement, but also we have online complaint portal. And on June 28th, a neighbor that lives down on Neal Street submitted a complaint for the high grass, the weeds, the old concrete block and trash. And as far as addressing the height of the grass on the date of the cleanup, we had a tractor out there, but it was to load and lift the concrete. The grass abatement was not necessarily... If all that had been there would have been the grass. There's trash, there's burnt trash from the house that was demoed. There was debris that was stacked up, and there was the concrete material. Grass alone, our judgment would have been to have moved on. Okay? There was an accumulation of nuisances.
Counsel, was proper notification given in this case?
Counsel attorney or counsel council?
Counsel.
Counsel attorney.
I believe that Mr. Clausen has provided sufficient evidence for the counsel to make that finding. A lien, and that's what's at issue, like we talked about when we first started. That's the issue before the counsel is whether to create the lien for the cleanup and the amount. The statute, and this is 1454-903, Arkansas Code annotated, 1454-903. The owner, the cleanup lien can only be imposed if the owner refuses to remove, abate, or eliminate after being given seven days' notice in writing. And under that statute, notices shall be regular mail and certified mail return receipt requested.
Given in a timely fashion.
As long as it was given seven days before the cleanup. You have to, the statute requires cities to give the owner of the property seven days to remedy the situation on their own.
It would require us to have sent this on January 2nd.
If the cleanup happened on January, no, actually, because it starts the day after the notice. So, the notice would need to have been received January 1st? And holidays and weekends are not accepted, so it's seven calendar days.
I'm not sure that we've... We testified that.
Counsel, I brought it back to you. We can let Mr. Registry and Mr. Clausen speak again? Or can we table this till we dig a little further? Or what are your recommendations, Mr. Finkenbinder?
The counsel can always table a motion or an issue before it for further, to a later date. I always prefer, if the counsel does that, that they table it to a date certain. You know, preferably the next council meeting, if the counsel decides to table it. And it might not be a bad idea, given the fact that you do have several members that are absent.
I would say that we need to do that because I think we need to get in our hand copies of all the receipts, all of everything, so we make the proper decision.
An established timeline on the mail is what I'm, okay.
Needs to happen. And that's just my opinion on that particular situation.
I will withdraw my motion for the resolution.
I'll make a motion to hold this in committee.
For the next council meeting.
Next meeting.
Two weeks from tonight. Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Hawkins, to pull this until two weeks to the next council meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to pull this until the meeting two weeks from tonight. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Clausen, thank you, Mr. Registry. All right, Mr. Hawkins.
Let's see. I'm going to have to get back, get all my papers put aside.
Ms. Zan, hello.
Hello.
How are you? This is for ordinance to approve annexation of approximately 67 and a half acres on Nutter Chapel Road. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission. When was it reviewed, Ms. Tucker?
I believe it was at the January meeting.
In the January meeting, and since I don't have those notes here, can you tell me what happened at that meeting?
The Planning Commission approved unanimously to forward to you the annexation, I'm sorry, I was trying to get this done. The annexation of 67.52 acres located off of Nutter Chapel Road. If you will allow me, this is county property. This is city limits, the gray is city limits. There is a 40-foot right-of-way along this part of the property, there, 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 and there. So, this and the 40-foot that's leading to these two pockets of land are county land. These are not strips that are connecting the city. They are strips that connect the county, which, as I've understood it, there's no problem with it. The county has legally released it to the city. There's, yes, from Judge Dodson. So...
It's somewhat like the property we had two weeks ago, isn't it?
A little bit, in that there are strips involved, but in that one, it was to connect city. In this one, it's to connect county. So, that's the biggest difference. And I feel like sometime in the future, those two enclaves will probably be absorbed into the city as well. They're just not going to be right now.
Are we creating a couple of islands here?
No, that's why I'm pointing out the 40-foot right-of-ways right here. That essentially, those two pieces of land right there are not going to abate. There's 40 feet that connect this to this, same thing up at the top. Mr. Crafton has dedicated those right-of-ways so that the county can stay as one.
I'll be recusing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
And Mr. Crafton's here, if you have any questions for him.
Would you like to come talk? Not necessary? We'd love to have you.
Mr. Ledbetter recused himself. You could just fire him.
This isn't something I'm trying to trick. This doesn't seem like common sense to me, but this is government, and y'all are part of the government. And if there's a piece of property in Conway that we ever annex into, this one makes sense. This joins, you can't see the rest of the picture, but the city goes for three more miles south. The city has built streets on both sides of this property, the city did, not the county. We've run water through the property, and on both sides, we've run sewer across this property, the city did. We have city electric around it. Only thing we're not getting, and honestly, this is my fault. When I bought the property, I never dreamed it wasn't in the city. So, then I found out about all the technicalities, but I'm sorry I'm even having to do this, but this makes it legal.
Glad to have you here.
Well, I'm glad to be here sometimes.
We need some buildable land.
But this isn't a trick, it's just to meet the law, so.
We have an ordinance to be read for this item. It's ordinance O-25...
'23.
'23.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to approve the annexation of 62.52 acres on Nutter Chapel Road, and I will be voting this go-round. So, any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mayor Castleberry?
Yes.
Ms. Hurd, what was that ordinance number? I'm sorry.
O-25-23.
Passes five to zero. Chief, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins, was that your last one?
Yes, sir, that's it for me.
Next up, we have Public Safety Committee. First, we have consideration to approve vehicle disposal for the Conway Police Department. Chief Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the first item, we're requesting the removal of a 2006 Acura from our inventory to be sold through auction. Hawkins, it's not good.
Make a motion that we allow that to be done.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a consideration of vehicle disposal with Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes five to zero. Chief, you're still up. An ordinance to approve the appropriation of fiscal year 2024 reimbursement funds for the Conway Police Department.
Yes, we just request that the list of reimbursement funds be returned to the respective... accounts. So, I'd also like to add that sometimes I ask for money, but sometimes I return it.
Not very often.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2024 reimbursements to the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Smell?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Passes five to zero. Chief, one more. An ordinance to approve the appropriation of reimbursement funds for the Conway Police Department.
Yeah, same as the last, just we request that these reimbursement funds be returned to their appropriate accounts, just a lot of extra duty services and reimbursements from the bulletproof vest grant and insurance proceeds.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O-2525.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance for appropriation of reimbursement to Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes five to zero. Thank you, chief. Next up, we have consideration to approve the disposal of inventory for the CIOC. For folks watching on TV, that is the Conway Emergency Operations Center.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is an easy one. We've got old dispatch furniture that we've had since the building was put in in '03, '04. It's lasted 20 years, it's lasted and done a really, really good job, but we have new furniture, which should be completed hopefully by Friday. So, the things that are, the items that are listed here are portions of that furniture that someone has said, "Hey, we want it." Much rather, it's still good, can go to good use, so there's some other agencies here that said they want it, so just ask for removal.
Make a motion that we approve the removal of these items from the inventory.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the removal and disposal of these items for CIOC. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes five to zero. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's all the business we have for tonight. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.